Just in church. I just looked up. Lots of people here. Welcome, everybody, tonight. Thank you for coming to the meeting. First thing we're going to do is ask for the invocation and the pledge. If you wouldn't mind standing and removing your hats, Dave Rainey's going to offer our invocation tonight.
Lord Jesus, we come to at this time, we're just humbling ourselves before you, giving thanks for everything that you do for us, Lord. And Father, we ask you tonight to be with each and everyone here and give us some wisdom and give us some guidance to help our city and lead us in the right direction into what happens to go. Father, we're just a passage to you. Please forgive us when we fail you. Let us not remember what this season is about. It's all about you. We can't do it without you. We'll just give you the praise and then glory to God in Jesus' name.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the next item on the agenda is items of community interest. I have a couple of things to say. I want to thank, and she's not here tonight, but I want to thank Cindy Roller and the Bowie Community Development Board for another successful parade. Thank you, the rain for holding off and making all of her work not go in vain. And she also said to please thank everybody for the successful sippin' stroll on Friday night. Bonnie would like for you all to know that she's doing a New Year's Eve. If you want to see who it is before you go, please pick up this flyer. On New Year's Eve, doors open at eight thirty. This is our last scheduled meeting for this year. Our next meeting will be the first one in January. And the Christmas holidays, the city office will be closed, all of cities will be closed, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. All right, so let's move on to the city manager's report.
The Nelson Street Bridge is winding down. Of course, on a project like this, small things need to be done before we make the final payment. For example, the grate over the drop box in the intersection is still not without problem. Grass will need to be planted. The metal plate on Mill Street would need to be removed, and a few other odds and ends will need to be fixed. The ditch at Houston and Mill Street got some concrete. I wrote this after I saw the concrete had been poured to prevent erosion there, which will be at our expense because the engineer did not see the erosion problem coming. The negotiation starts with the construction company regarding the final payment amount. And of course, we've got that on the agenda tonight. Texas Water Development Board has approved Phase Two of the Surrland Project. It will include Caulfield, Strong, Roach, Hudson Streets, and the alley behind Home Street. We will begin the bidding process shortly. It should be ready to go in a month or so. The easement for the Glen Hills Lift Station is now being negotiated, and hopefully, we will have that project ready soon. The new transformer at the substation is delivered and assembled. That crew left the week before Thanksgiving. We've been waiting on one particular structure to get here so that we can get the Brazos crew back to finalize their part of the project. The structure for the transformer switches came in last Wednesday, which really surprised us, and Brazos is planning on being here the week of December sixteenth. So it's nice to be able to say that project is moving right along and doing well. The Wichita Street Community Development Block Grant Waterline Project is in its final stages. The final payment for the grant money was made last week, and the final payment for the project will be made soon. Our Community Development Block Grant Company, Public Management, who is our grant writer, has had us go ahead and take the first steps necessary for the new Community Development Block Grant, even though we did not get funded in the first round this time. But if you will remember, we got funded in the second round last time, so there's still a possibility that we could get funded again. So, any questions?
Did that, the first community block development grant that we did get, is that, that covered everything for that project? For what? The remainder, the final project, the payment that we got, or was it?
Oh, yeah.
Was it the amount we expected?
We had a match to pay, but we didn't want to pay that. So, yeah, that covered everything.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bert? All right, let's move on to the consent agenda items. In your packet is the last meeting's minutes and along with the write-offs. As you know, we approve these, new council members, we approve these at, all at the same time.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Donna, do I have a second?
Second.
Brent? Shaw?
Yes.
Truax? Ashley?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
And Walker?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the new business to approve the change order for Nelson Street Bridge Replacement Project. I'm going to turn that over to Bert again.
This is kind of the negotiation, winding down of the Nelson Street project, the change order that takes place. If you look in your packet, you see some of the things that we got charged extra for and some things that we get money back for. The main thing here is the, we had sixty-six hundred and fifty days, fifty dollars of liquidated damages, which is the seven hundred dollar a day charge. And then the engineers, we had to pay the engineers and were deducting that from the payment, an additional twenty-nine thousand dollars in change. And so, the last change order, it's basically a contract reduction amount of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred, twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. So, anyway, the next item on the agenda has to do with the final pay request, but the contractor did not get his information to us or the engineer fast enough to have it on tonight's meeting, and so we'll delay the final payment at least until next month when we have a meeting there because the council has to approve the final payment amount, and this is strictly for the bridge replacement, the change order.
So then, if anyone has questions, Bert?
What, the items you listed off as needed to be completed, are they going to be done before the final payment?
Yes.
Stoney?
For example, it took me a minute to cycle through that.
Stoney's been working with them already with the list of things they need to do.
Stoney's working with them every day, but I found out about two or three weeks ago that there's some local contractors or subs that did not get paid for work they've done. And so I'm going to make sure all the subs are going to get paid before we issue a check for it.
Yep, that'd be a good thing.
It's a large amount of money that they owe these local contractors, so.
So they're still doing work on it?
No, not really. They hadn't been here in how long?
I met with them Friday.
Yeah.
So when we got done with Friday, I put together a bunch of lists of items that need to be taken care of, so they're having to finish those items up. And when I was on the phone with them today, that's what I told them, you're not getting your final payment until those items are corrected.
But that's not going, of course, out of seven hundred dollars a day?
No. No, the project is substantially, was substantially complete when the street drained as built and the traffic flowed. That's what they consider substantially complete in the contract. So, they've substantially completed it. There's just a lot of stuff. We don't have to pay them the rest of the money until they finish everything else. Or, let's put it like this, we're not going to pay them another cent until they finish everything.
Well, maybe I'm just not understanding, on the additional engineering costs?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, were these things that were found out after the engineering? We already had the price from the engineers?
Yeah. What happened is the contractor, well, one of the items in particular was they poured some concrete on the bridge, on the upstream, and they didn't do the rebar properly. And so, the engineers had to go in and re-engineer, and, you know, there's a concrete wall on the upstream side of the bridge. That is to support the bridge because they didn't do the rebar properly inside of it. And so, we just said, you've got to do something, so they had to build that wall. We didn't have to pay-
So shouldn't they pay for the engineering cost then?
They did. That's, that's, that's that twenty-nine thousand dollars I mentioned.
Okay, that's their cost.
That's, that's, they're having, we're deducting what we paid the engineer from what we owe them.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, so then, remember that the vote for this is strictly to approve the change order as presented to you. So do I have a motion to move?
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Sprouls? Walker?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Truax?
Aye.
And Shaw?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so obviously, number two is going to be removed from the agenda tonight, and we'll go on to item number three, which is the reappearance to the library board of Kelsey Beach, Sally Morgan, Benny Pickett, and Christie Riley, although each one of these have to be approved individually. So the first one I'll call for a vote on is Kelsey Beach. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sprouls, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Truax? Ashley?
Aye.
Sprouls? Post?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Truax?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
The second individual is Sally Morgan. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Post, do I have a second?
Second.
Brent? Sprouls?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Truax?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
The third individual is for Benny Pickett. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ashley, do I have a second?
Second.
Walker? Truax?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Thank you. And the last one is Christie Riley. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Shaw, do I have a second?
Second.
Post? Truax?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Ashley?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth, for being here and bringing this to us. All right, the next item on the agenda, number four, is to consider the airport hangar lease terms for privately built hangars at the City of Bowie Municipal Airport. This has been brought to me by Councilwoman Ashley, Councilwoman Ashley, Councilmember Ashley. She has been contacted by Mr. David Castles. Where are you, sir? Would you like to come to the podium and let's discuss this? He has asked for a, correct me at any time, Bert, if I am wrong here, and Stoney, we traditionally offer a twenty-year lease on different contracts like this.
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-
The last one, twenty-five. Before that, it was twenty years.
Yeah. So, Mr. Castles would like a much longer lease for a privately built hangar that he would like to put out at the airport. So I'm going to let him present to us what his ideas are so that we can further discuss it.
Cool. I just want to say thank you for letting me speak on my request for the airport hangar today. My name's David Castle, and I'm a builder and developer out of DFW. The past few years, I've built several houses out here by the lake with some pretty cool remodels here in town. I also own the RV park called Flying Horse. Today, I'm requesting a fifty-year lease on the air hangars. I thought there was a twenty-five or thirty-year lease. I didn't know exactly what it was. There's no way to build out the airport with a successful return with today's interest rates and material and labor costs. This project will consist of bringing in Tex- dot Flex Base asphalt with proper road compaction on taxi tie-in. Existing takes, you know, it takes away from the building, the structure costs and all that stuff for the tie-in for the airport. I feel this would be great for the community to allow growth financially and economically for the City of Bowie. I believe if we can't make a deal, the airport will stand stagnant for years to come, costing taxpayers money. This will increase fuel cell purchases and economic growth and adding tremendous amount of value to the city when they convey over to the, you know, when they convey over to the city. I have approved funds for seven million dollars right now. My plan is to build one T-hanger at a time. Once it's fifty or sixty percent occupied, we'll build the next T-hanger. Approximately eight T-hangers, so like a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. I also envision building individual hangars for privately owned airplane guys. We would help market all of the social media platforms to drive the future tenants. That's it. I have a, we have some plans in place. I just didn't want to go too, get too involved and spend a lot of money on structural and planning, but we could send proof of fund showing that we are funded for it if you did want to extend the lease on it as well.
So is my understanding it's fifty years or nothing?
Yes. There's just no possi, it's not feasible to do it.
But you do have to remember, too, that in that amount of time, they have to pay for lease of the land. So we'll be adding revenue to our already things that we spend at the airport. Like, our expenses, according to our budget, is three hundred and forty-one thousand, and now we've budgeted for fuel and hangar revenue at two hundred and four thousand. So if we have more airplanes there, because right now, the hangars are all full, and they're also full at every other local airport around here. I've talked to Bridgeport Airport Manager. They, they're completely full, and they can't build anymore at the time because they don't have this infrastructure to handle it. So I just thought it was a wonderful idea and an opportunity for us to increase our revenue by having someone build out there and sell more gasoline, too.
So you're planning on collecting the lease payments?
Yes, that's how it'd get paid back.
So how does that increase the revenue at the airport?
Fuel cells.
Because he has to pay for lease of the land to the city.
Is that how our, is that how our contract works?
Well, we only have one right now, and their lease of the land's kind of ridiculous, but I do know from other airports that it's very lucrative.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, I'd like for Stoney to get up and explain to the council exactly how this has been working in the past.
Cool.
Thank you.
I'd like to start out first by kind of handing you out a packet that I gave David to do. It's kind of a layout that I had the engineers do for us a couple of years ago. This is basically the only direction that we can build hangars, so I'll just hand you that.
Has David got one? Maybe you want to show David?
Yeah, he's got it.
Oh, he does?
Remember what I gave you? So basically, what this is, is it's an option for us to do hangar extensions. And the reason they all have to go to the South is because when we redid the taxiways back in 2013, we extended the taxiways to accommodate the future if we decided to build hangars. Now, when Mr. Castle talked to me at the airport about building hangars, I was pretty clear with him that I have to have some kind of hangar design. Many factors are involved in that. One, I need to know where he's going to build it. Is it going to tie into the existing taxiways? Is it going to tie into the existing tarmac? Okay, so I need that information. How high are the hangars going to be? Depending on the height of the hangars, you'd have to do an aeronautical study that's required by the FAA. Don't get me wrong, I've talked to many people about building hangars. We need hangars. I agree with Donna, we need hangars. Tex- dot Aviation has gotten out of the hangar building business. For those who don't know, most of the airport funds are done through grants that are ninety-ten program. A few years back, when we redid the runway, that cost the City of Bowie nothing because they had the CARES Act money, so I filed for that, so that cost the City of Bowie nothing. So, with all that being said, there's just too many variables without some kind of design. And I get kind of leery about when you tell me I'm going to build this one this year, and then two years from now, we're going to build this one, and three years from now, I'm going to build that one. So we personally have a problem with that, but at the end of the day, it's not my decision. I'm just telling you my concerns. The, we have one other tenant out there that's built a private hangar. There's other factors involved in that. I need proof of insurance. You need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of liability insurance while you're constructing. After you're on the property and built, I need a million dollars worth of liability insurance. There's a lot of factors that we haven't even discussed yet. And I need, biggest deal is, is we need a design so I know what we're going to wind up.
Well, I think what we're just discussing, not exactly the exact amount, we're just trying to discuss and find out if the city, if we're willing to say, if you bring all those things to us, would we be willing to extend the lease?
And I understand that, but to do, to do a lease, too, though, you'd always have, you also have to factor in how much land is you wanting, because that's going to determine the land lease, the ground lease. So you can't just tell me, hey, I want half an acre, and then two years from now, I want five acres or ten acres. You know what I'm saying? I need, we need some kind of direction on what we're asking for.
It's for the plan that you presented to me, the eighth hangar, T-hangers, and then I can build some like so, partially a hundred and twenty thousand square foot buildings to the south. So I was following your concept, and we can get it structurally, structural reports, engineered, all that stuff.
Right. And the biggest deal with that, David, again, is I have to know the height and all that stuff.
Oh, for sure.
Because if we have to do an aeronautical study, then that changes everything.
You don't present, you know, formal plans.
That's pretty much all I have on it, is my concerns, so.
The fifty years, in my opinion, is totally unreasonable. We've given twenty-five years on the last hangar that was built.
Actually, it's, that's, it's thirty.
Thirty years, whatever it was. And that's stretching it out. When you advertise, I would be building hangars tomorrow if, if we could get enough money, hangar rent, to pay for the hangars. That's the problem. You can't get enough money. All the airports that Donna talks about, they're just like we are. They can't get enough rent. If you raise it, you know, say twenty percent, they, you start losing people out of the hangars. They're not willing to pay that. That's what we've found in the past. And so, the thirty years is fine. I don't have a problem with that. And, and of course, in the construction side of it, I learned a long time ago, we built a hangar when I was on the council years ago, and it got three-fourths done, and the contractor dropped it, and we had no bond on it and stuff, and we'd lost about thirty or forty thousand dollars, the city did, on that deal. So if there's any construction, it's going to be, have to be bonded, just like any construction that the city does. So there's a lot of requirements. If you're willing to fill those requirements and, and settle for thirty years, I'm right there with you, but, you know, it just, I know that the deal won't work. I mean, I know how to advertise things out and know. Otherwise, you know, I'd be building hangars tomorrow because we do need the revenue. You're exactly right. But it's got to be a good deal for the city. We can't subsidize what you do.
I'm not going to spend millions of dollars and then charge a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars a month for a twenty-five year term. You won't pay your money back.
Well, I, that's why I think that your deal will fold because nobody will pay the prices you're going to have to have. Well, that's my opinion, so.
Conversation about this earlier today, and I, this is not towards you specifically, it's just towards a private individual that's going to start a business out there. So we have you running our airport, and you're over all the airport hangars and responsible for those leases. And then we're going to have another individual on our property running a business. So we've got two leaders out there. I'm not in favor of subleasing hangars out there. The gentleman that built uses it strictly for himself. He's not subleasing it. So it's another thing for you to think about.
Let me just finish saying this. As I said earlier, I'm all for trying to improve that airport, and I'll tell you this, and I think Laura, when she, hate to say it, but that place was a dump when I took it over, and we've made vast improvements. We, we have gone up on our revenue with the, with the fuel cells on the JDA when we put the automated system in. But the reason Tex- dot Aviation quit building hangars is for the same thing that I'm concerned with for David is, is the return on your, on your money. It takes so long to get your money back when you spend that kind of money to build hangars. That's why the city hasn't done it. My job, when I was asked about this, I said, I'm willing to listen to anybody anytime about it. My job is to protect what we have out there right now, but at the end of the day, I don't make the final decisions.
Well, we're not, the city's not going to be building any hangars.
Right.
We know that. We don't have the money to build hangars.
And it takes you too long to get your money back. That's why I said I agree with David. It takes too long to get your money back. And that's why Tex- dot Aviation got out of the business. They're giving funds for that. And everyone, you're like, and you're right, too. Every airport around here has hangar problems.
They're full.
And I talked to a lot of them. We all talk about rates and this and that, and ground leases and everything else that's involved, so.
How many hangars do we have out there right now?
Well, I go by spaces because we got a community hangar. So we have thirty-four stationed airplanes.
So this is discussion tonight. If you guys need to learn more, that's, that's what this is about. This is strictly discussion. Any other questions for Stoney? Any other questions for David? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody have any comments?
If you were to provide all-
Pull your, pull your microphone down.
If David were to provide everything that we need, you know, the bonds, everything like that, and it was just the lease time that would be stopping, would that be, like, would that, Bert, is that, is that like your, pretty much your major downfall is how, how long the lease is on it?
Yeah, if, he'd go for thirty years, you know, I'd be right there with him because I, because the fuel sales is enough to make, you know, the airport profitable. I don't have a problem with that, but fifty years is just too long.
What the deal is, is after that thirty years, it belongs to the city then.
Donna, would you pull your microphone down, so?
Yeah, it belongs to the city.
So after the thirty, he basically is gifting it to the city.
Right. And that's, I could understand why they want a longer lease than that.
And then why this is happening, he's paying us each month some sort of-
The big hangar that, what's your name?
Metzler.
The ground lease?
Yeah. Yeah.
Twelve hundred.
$1,200 a year. We're not going to make much money off of that.
Well, I would assume we would, to me, that's too little to have asked.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta give more a month than $1,200. Or you're going a year than $1,200.
That was, yeah, that was for you.
Well, that was a deciding factor when we negotiated the contract with the gentleman, what, what the annual lease was on the ground. He's spending all the money and he, you know, he doing all that. He's going to give it up after 30 years. And he said, I can't pay more than the $1,200 a year for the lease. So, you know, you figure it out.
I just know that I, I have a friend in Decatur that has their own hangar. And he told me he pays the city $900 a month for his hangar. And he has a large hangar with several airplanes, but he pays $900 a month.
From, from what we understand, Stony has contracted other airports like Bridgeport, and they don't charge anywhere close to that for a single plane. Just, I'm, I'm sure it has to do with how big the plane you've got and what you've got sitting there, so.
I'd suggest we do some more research. You guys, you guys look and see. Ask the questions. Come see Bert, go see Stony. Maybe, do like Donna's done, do your own research.
Thank you, David.
David, thank you for coming, making your presentation. Certainly, I was going to say, you certainly don't have to sit through the rest of our meeting. Beth, I meant to tell you the same thing. You certainly don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting. The next item on the agenda is consider changing the council meetings back to the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Years ago, we had a couple of council members that had children in school playing sports, and they wanted to move it to Monday, so that they wouldn't have to miss either meetings or games. Sandy and I have talked at length about this. With our office being closed on Fridays now, the Monday, Tuesday would give you two more, you know, another full day to come in and visit. Plus, we have a lot of conflicts with holidays, so.
I'll make a motion to go back to the second.
I didn't even get a chance to ask you.
Oh, I'm all for it.
Okay, we have a motion.
If you want some history, the reason that they changed it to Tuesday originally was because there were several people on the council that bet football games, and they wanted to be available to watch football games on Monday night. So that's, that's what it is.
So I have a motion on the floors from Councilwoman Sprouls to move the meetings to the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month, starting in January. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Post. Walker.
Aye.
Ashley.
Aye.
Sprouls.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Truax.
Aye.
And Post.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We all like Monday night football, so.
It really works out better.
All right, so the next two items on the agenda are both concerning the rate adjustment for the water. Somebody back there want to reach up to those light switches behind that door and turn a couple of them off? So I'm going to turn this over to Bert, because he's done extensive work and investigation and detailed study on the rate adjustments and the reason for some of this, most of it.
I'm going to read this. Not that you can't read, but it might go a little quicker this way. Many think, people think that we have rate increases just because. However, all rate increases request are a business decision to ensure the financial stability of the city. We do, we do not want rate increases. We need rate increases. I personally do not want the rate increases, but it's my job and my responsibility to ensure the financial stability of the city. My business training has taught that, me that we must raise rates periodically if we're to progress and make improvement. Next page. In case of this presentation, you should see that just like our citizens' costs have increased, our costs have gone up too. The cost of operations treating water and requirements from our state regulatory agency, TCEQ, have made it so that, on average, we're losing money in our water fund. We cannot continue to let this happen. Please keep it, this in mind as you view this presentation. Next page. For example, because of drought conditions and not raising rates, the city of Clyde, Texas defaulted on a bond payment in August of 2024 this year. Clyde's credit rating was drastically lowered, so that now they cannot borrow money, they cannot finance equipment or buy anything of substance. What happened in Clyde is caused by incompetence. I don't want to be accused of being incompetent. We do not want to get in the condition of Clyde, Texas, and we could very well. Next page. In 2018 budget process, which was my first year here, we recognized that water rates were inadequate to cover increasing costs. We increased the water rates then, in 2018, by a small percentage of 4% to cover the increasing cost of treating water and maintaining the water plant and replacing old lines throughout the city. So it's been several years since we've had a rate increase. Next page. We instituted the, an infrastructure fund that could only be used for water and sewer lines with the city council's permission. Since then, we have self-funded several water lines and sewer lines in all parts of the city. With these funds and the community development block grant funds, we have replaced somewhere over 5,000 feet of line. So we've replaced over a mile. Next page. In the last three years with increasing costs, we have not added to the infrastructure fund. The total amount of these funds has gone from about $1,200,000 down to $426,000 in July of this year's budget. Chart one, and I don't know if y'all can read that. But it, I think the council has pages that they can read. But in the bottom part of the chart there, it shows that we were making good money. I can't see the number right off, and I don't have it in front of me. But, and then last year, we lost money in a couple of months. But if you'll see, in the last six months, we've been losing to the tune of about $1,300, average about losing $1,300 a month for something that we were making $300,000 or $400,000 a year on several years ago. As I mentioned recently, TCEQ requires us to add another 60 horsepower raw water pump to our raw water pump station at Amica Carter Lake. The estimated cost is between $850,000 and $950,000, which will substantially increase our deficit. The following proposals will increase revenue for paying for the raw water pump and help with the increased cost of treating water. The next chart, and y'all can't see that either. It's not big enough. It represents our current water rates and the revenue generated. That's, that's the current rates. The next chart after that shows, the next two charts shows a 16% rate increase this year, along with a 16% rate increase the following year. Even with these two rate, rate increases, we might have to borrow money. I said will in my statement, but we might have to borrow money to finance the raw water pump. The next two charts show a flat $7.50 per month water infrastructure charge and a 7% increase this year, and another 7% increase next year. The $7.50 flat will be programmed to expire in 2030. All of these charts show the estimated additional revenue generated from the rate increase. It is possible that we can self-finance the raw water pump, but to do it, we must include the rate increase to replenish our fund balances. I do not recommend we self-finance the raw water pump, because I do not want to dip into our reserves. We might try that, but we'd just have to see as time went by. The lucky thing is, and I'll explain it later, this chart compares the new rates with other cities, the next one, that one right there. And if you'll look where the yellow color is up there, that shows that even with our rate increases, our water rates are lower than those people. In the gray areas, our rates are going to be about the same. So we're not going to be above anybody else. We're, we're basically catching up. I've spoken with our financial advisor, Governor Capitol. If we borrow the $950,000 for a 10-year term, the payment will be about $120,000 per year with an interest rate of less than 5%. There are no covenants on our existing loans, and since we are financing a physical pump, we can use the pump as collateral. If you choose not to borrow money, we can finance this project with a $7.50 fee in two consecutive years of 7% increases in the water rates. The $7.50 will replenish the funds that we self-finance with. With this plan, we will have no interest costs, since we will not be borrowing the money. However, if we self-finance, we will dip into our reserves. And as I said earlier, I do not recommend self-financing. To summarize, I propose we borrow money and choose between either option one or two. Number one, a 7% increase in two consecutive years with a $7.50 infrastructure charge until 2030. Or number two, a 16% increase in two consecutive years. Both plans will generate enough revenue for the paper, for the raw water pump, future lines that need replaced and cover our increased costs. I ask a few, each of you to consider this request favorably. It's in the city's best financial interest to continue upgrading our water system and stay ahead of inflation. I'm sure there's some questions, so if you have any.
Would that same person turn the lights back on? Thank you.
I'm going to have to borrow your copies, so. Thank you.
All right, so let's talk about this. Brett, open up the conversation.
16% twice, year to year, sounds just like an exorbitant amount to increase when we're talking about the last increase coming from 18 of 4%. And that was able to fund us. So I'm, I'm kind of lost in some of these numbers that that big of a chunk is needed. And also, I have concerns that TECQ can come in here and just tell us we need something that we haven't needed for years and years and years, and still, on a regular basis, don't, would not use.
To answer both questions, the first one is about TCEQ. If we don't do what they say, we can get fined.
What's that repercussion look like? What's our course of, can we push against this?
They'll find you so much, so many thousand dollars a day if you don't do what they tell you to do. In other words, the number of water meters we have, if we don't adequately have raw water capacity. Now, I agree with you. They're always, it's terrible that we're doing just fine right now. But by their rules, we have to have the capacity to pump the amount of water that they say we do. And so, you know, it's like years ago, when we built the water and sewer plant out there where they're at now. I happened to be mayor at that time, and TCEQ, it was the old water commission then, it hadn't changed names. But they started fining us $7,000 a day, because the city had drug their feet about building those. I went to Austin to argue that. And I got them to drop it, because I showed them the plans for our new plants. I got them to drop it, but we still had to pay them one day. So, I mean, you know, $7,000, that, it's wasted money. And I argued, it till I was blue in the face. It didn't do any good. You just sent us the money, so.
Isn't this just an extra raw water pump? We already have.
We have two, yeah. It, it's just the capacity of the pumps does not.
Well, it's extra that, that we built far, the capacity of. So there's a spot there to set in this one.
To set in another one?
Yes, there is a spot. It was built when they built the new water plant, they built, prepared for that.
It's when we built the lake line to the new side of the lake, that they built that pump station. And they, they, there was a spot for a three pump. Capacity at that time, we only needed two. And basically, when they put this pump in, they'll have to drill a hole in the wall for the pipe, and, you know, it.
How big is it? Is it really big?
Yeah, it's a pretty good size. Mark, how big are they?
12 inches.
The line's 12 inches, but I'm talking about the pump. Physical pump itself is about the six, eight foot tall.
It's a 200. The pump shows that it's a 200 horsepower pump.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it said 60 horsepower.
Well, the pump that's out, that are out there right now, the labels that are on them are, call them 200 horsepower pumps.
Okay, but what we're buying is a 60 horsepower, right?
That's all they're requiring.
Well, that's quite a bit smaller, isn't it? Have you already priced this?
I got the engineer to give me the estimates on the construction, the pump, and the engineering costs. And that, he said between $850 and $950. And you don't know until you bid it.
Yeah, because it'll go out for a sealed bid.
Yeah.
Well, we cannot continue, even if we don't buy the pump, you know, and that's, that's what part of this is. Even if we don't buy the pump, we're going to have to increase rates. Because our costs for chemicals or infrastructure changes, it's like right now, we're dealing with a sewer line in town that we're probably going to have to lay new line. Not because we want to, but because we have to. Because we can't let raw sewer out on the ground.
So how much increase would we make if we only increase the people that are outside the city of limits and the commercial water users? Would that be enough?
That's not enough. If you'll look at some of the charts.
Because we don't charge outside the city very much more than what our citizens charge.
And you can only charge them a little bit more if you charge inside, if it does not affect the cost of it.
But it has affected the cost.
In other words, legally, we can charge people outside the city limits more than we can people inside, but there is a limit to how much more you can charge them.
Because I've noticed some of these towns that were listed at, like, $10 more than the other ones.
Are you talking about on their base rates?
Yeah.
The base rates, I mean, that's a one-time.
Just so y'all know, let me, let me make this real clear, just so you'll know. This is not my total calculation. I have been working with a firm called Waterworth. Waterworth takes our rates, our numbers, and analyzes them thoroughly. Actually, the, the amount of rate increase came from water professionals, engineers that know this kind of stuff. It's not just me, it's them too. So it, it, you know, they, and I wanted to do this much earlier, and they recommended we do it earlier, but I was persuaded. Anyway.
Yeah, I think it's Bridgeport, Jacksboro, Rome, and Gainesville all charge like $10 more on the base rate. For commercial, they don't have an out-of-the-city rate. But I'm just talking about their commercial rates.
All I did is, when I calculated these rates, along with Waterworth, was we looked at it as a competitive issue. In other words, we wanted to be in the line with everybody else or lower than them. And we pretty much stayed there. And we didn't want to penalize commercial over residential. And if you'll look at the outside rates, they're just not that much higher than inside. But if you look at the number, number of meters, where it says usage here, that, like on the proposed rate chart, it says 2,700, 27,444. That's a multiple of 12 months of, of a meter charge. And it basically.
What chart are you on?
Any of them, any of the ones.
The current water rates will tell you what he's talking about.
Current water rates, you'll see it. It's the usage, and those numbers are multiples of how many meters we have. And there's, there's in-town, inside the city limit rates, there's 27,444 meter readings. In other words, that's how many, that's, that's a month. 7964. So there's, there's five times more meters inside than outside the city limits. There's, that is, there's not enough to affect the rate that much. You can't charge them that much.
I just noticed that on our, on our. I just noticed that on our, on our budget, under the utility fund of revenue, we have down two million sixty-nine or two million seventy. Is that what we expected to get?
Two million seventy thousand dollars.
That's what we expected to get?
That's what we should get now.
But with no rate increase?
Right.
Yeah.
But that's not enough. If you'll look back in that chart where there's three of them, uh, on the twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we average, uh, losing thirteen hundred and seven dollars a month. There's some months that we made money, but there's one, two, six, six months we lost money. And it's not little losses, it's big ones. And those are where the bills come in for the chemicals and the pipe and all, all things like that that we need to do.
How soon is TCUQ requiring us to get this stuff? Or when do they think we need it done by?
Well, in October twenty-second, we sent a letter to TCUQ asking them for an extension so that we would have time to, uh, effectively take care of this problem. We have not received an answer from them about whether we have, we have, uh, extra time or not. Have you, have you talked to Kevin lately? Has he said anything about it?
Other than, we're supposed to be here in a couple of weeks to talk about the next year.
Yeah.
But can you give me a fire, 'cause I'll make sure everybody, I don't know if everybody understands what TCUQ is.
They're like the EPA of state government, what they are.
They're the bane of our society.
Yes.
Just making sure you have clean drinking water.
But also get to mandate something that they're not gonna allow funds for, or time even, it sounds like.
No, they get to mandate it, and it's what we refer to as an unfunded mandate, which we've been lucky for quite some time, been hit with an unfunded mandate.
Every month, I get a email from TCUQ. And I call it a bragging email because they brag about how many, how many fines, how many people they find and for what. And a lot of them are municipal water systems, municipal sewer systems. There's also some private, private industry that they find also. But a lot of times, it amounts to three and four million dollars a month just in fines that they're collecting. And that, that kinda kills you because they have the authority to do that.
The last thing we want is to be fined ten thousand dollars a day and have to waste that money instead of putting it towards the, either the expenses and/or the new pump, pump project.
I tried to use good reasoning, uh, with the old Water Commission on, on our stuff. And I told the guy, I said, "You're gonna fine us seven thousand dollars a day." And I said, "I could take seven thousand dollars and fix one manhole and stop the, uh, inflow and infiltration of stormwater into the manhole with that. And I don't care with his actions." I mean, they just, they do what they do, so. Anyway, you've got the numbers. I presented them. It's up to y'all to do whatever you wanna do.
With these five months that we lost money previously last year, but the year before, we only had two months like that. Isn't that really kind of determined on what kind of summer or whatever?
Not really, not really. Because the cost of chemicals probably went up, you know, every, they say the inflation rate was ten, twelve percent. So, our inflation rates were thirty and forty and fifty percent. Stoddy will verify that. Jerry will verify that at the plant. It's just everything for the city government has gone up.
Is, is there any way to maybe buy them in bulk and get them cheaper?
We are buying them.
Like, what if we buy them, like even more?
We don't buy five gallons at a time. We, we buy a thousand gallons at a time.
Well, if you buy five thousand, will it be cheaper? 'Cause you know you're gonna use it.
We, well, you've gotta have somewhere to put it. And it requires special containers for, we use bleach as our main disinfectant. And we've got, I, I think those containers out there are three thousand gallon. I'm not real sure, I can't remember. But you'd have to go buy some really expensive containers to put it in. And so, you'd be wasting money. You know, it, because, uh, it just, I don't know. I, you know, we've got some big containers out there.
'Cause I'm looking at the budget, and we have down for supplies, under the chemicals, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is what we planned on.
And that, that, you know, the-
We're over, aren't we?
Oh, yeah, we're way over.
So, in September, we had, we had already spent a hundred and twenty-four thousand of our hundred and eighteen thousand dollar budget?
And that was just on chemicals? So, now look at it like this. I mean, and I'm sure each one of you did. On a five thousand gallon customer, Stephanie and I did some numbers today just to see what the actual increase would be. It looks to be about a five, five dollar a month increase on a five thousand dollar residential, I mean, a five thousand gallon residential customer. It's a little bit-
I mean, which one are you looking at?
Um, on the sixteen percent.
The sixteen?
Yeah. And then on the seven and seven, it, it'll be a little bit higher than that. It'll be a, the base increase is a, a dollar forty. So, it's about seven dollars, a little bit more than seven, eight dollars increase. But the sunset, the seven dollars and fifty cents will sunset at the end of twenty thirty. So, that would go away.
When we talk about self-funding and reserves, are we talking about money from our tax pool or CD?
Tax pool, mostly.
And is that, I mean, is that not what some of this is for?
Well, remember, we're also required by law to keep so much-
Right.
-on hand for a minimum of three months, is it, Bert? Three months? So, that's also figured in these cash balances too.
And, and that's why I say, i- if, if we self-financial, if we get below what we're required to have, then we borrow the money.
Right.
So, under this proposed new rate, for inside the city, if we did the flat rate, it would go from nineteen ninety-six to twenty-six eighty-five.
You mean with the seven fifty?
Well, it just says flat rate.
Well, that's the second year of the sixteen percent increase.
No. It's two, the, the two propositions are, one, the first year you have sixteen percent, the second year you have sixteen percent.
Well, no, but the numbers that she just rattled, all twenty-six, thirty-five, that's the second year of the sixteen percent.
Okay.
What I, but the outside of the city limits, if, say they were paying, uh, twenty-six eighty-five, then the outside is only gonna pay thirty-eighty-nine, and the commercial rate is thirty-sixty-seven, that's barely-
Well, let me, let me put it this way. I didn't come up with these exact numbers. The Waterworth Company did. They said that this is what you need to do, what you need to do.
Donna, if you think that the adjustments need to be made there, I mean, that's certainly something you can present.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that people, if people inside the city pay for everything-
Including the taxes.
Yeah. Why do we charge so little for people outside the city and commercial?
I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll come up with different rates. I'll find out what legally I can charge outside the city limit water customers and come up with some numbers.
I just don't think it's fair that we pay for everything, and then they're almost getting it for the same price.
I don't disagree.
It's like for free for them.
Be beneficial to table it and maybe have a workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think workshops gonna do any good, you either.
Well, if we have a workshop-
I, I, I'll bring you some more numbers.
That's what I was gonna say, let you bring some numbers.
Numbers and theories and ideas that that would probably be a-
Well, I don't think we, we have the expertise to do that as a group.
Can we bring in your Waterworth?
They're, they're in Washington State.
Would they like, would they, can they have a computer?
Yeah.
Okay. We could probably do a zoom of that.
So, out of curiosity, what would be your percentage guess that you would like to see the difference?
Well, I'd just like to go by some of the numbers, um, that he has in here about what some of the other cities, how much more they're paying the ones I said while ago. I mean-
I've, all that information is available on the internet where I got all these other cities, water rates and stuff, what they charge.
They didn't give you these numbers?
It came straight off the internet. Just like us, it, it has to be on their website now. So, I just got it off their website.
Okay, the water, the-
It's an accurate, uh, depiction of what their rates are.
I just think if we're gonna have to raise rates, that we should make it more fair for the citizens of Bowie and quit subsidizing outside of the city. And the commercial people need to pay a little bit more.
It'll be real easy to come up with some numbers and jack their prices up, so, you know, it, uh, that's fine. I can try that, so.
I don't know. Other people may feel differently. Maybe we can get a deal on that raw water thing like we did for the electric.
Boy, that'd be nice, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it would.
So, what do you guys wanna instruct Bert to do?
I can bring some more numbers if you want numbers that jack up the outside the city limit numbers.
Please don't.
Do what?
Please don't. Can I say one thing, Bert?
Yes, sir.
I had a look at Bert's numbers, and the only thing I'm concerned with is, since I took over the water and service, we utilized about eight hundred thousand of that one point two million replacing water lines. We're down, what was it, four twenty-six?
Four twenty, yeah.
My biggest concern is to make sure we start trying to put some pumps back in there. 'Cause I'll probably use that money in the next year and a half, and there will be no more of that. That's my big concern.
Valid point. Alright, so, then Bert, what I, what I hear is that you need to do some commercial and inside and out and residential outside the city limits. Refiguring, maybe?
That's just what I'm saying. I mean, you can vote.
It's easy to do. I'll just find out what I can legally do, what difference that I can charge.
I think we have to exhaust every option before we again go to these higher rate increases that have been hammered this year. I understand that we've been able to keep it where it is, and I understand the needs of all this, but also, I feel like us have a responsibility to everybody else as well. And at the end of it, it may end up exactly what you presented. I don't know, but I feel like right now, I don't think I can say yes to this.
I agree with that.
Alright, I can come up with new numbers. But it, you know, I, I can pretty much tell you that the revenue requirements are there. We, I mean, it just depends on how we get there.
How we get there. Alright, so that means that ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-four dash ten and twenty twenty-four dash eleven are both gonna be, um, tabled.
Yes.
Now, that means we have to come back next month with it. Not the, do we have to vote on a table?
Let's don't table them, because when you table them, you have to bring them back.
Alright, so-
And he's gonna be bringing this something back.
A different resolution?
Yeah, so we're just gonna not take any action.
We won't take any action. That way, if he brings new numbers, we can go that way. I'll tell you what we'll do. On the next, um, of course, I'll have to be numbered, I guess, different. But on the next agenda, we'll bring back these two, and we'll bring back what he's gonna bring to you. That way, you've got all three to consider the same night. Does that work for everybody? Yes, yeah. Alright, well, then we won't take any action tonight on number six and number seven. Do we have any public comments in the room? Yes, uh, please come to the podium and state your name.
Roger Lamb, three twelve Hudson. So, those figures you were talking about, that's based on what? The assumption that water usage won't go down when you raise the rate? 'Cause my mother and my sister, they like to water their lawn to make everything look pretty, but they're already talking about not doing that when the rate goes up. That's just, and you might have seen my sister's property. It's that five oh-one Robertson, and had a bunch of sycamores on it, but the tornado took them out. And then she replaced them with crepe myrtles. It's one of the most prettiest lawns all the time. Imagine what happens when she stops watering it. So, that's something to consider. And then I'm starting to wonder, how much are you paying Waterworks? Could we not save money since you can come up with the figures on your own?
Oh, Waterworth?
Whatever their name is.
Because they're professionals at what they do, they've-
But you're a professional too.
Not like they are.
Yeah.
But, yeah, software costs five grand a year. But if you hire a company to do a water study for you-
Oh, is it software? Is that what it is?
Basically, I'm, I'm communicating with them over, via the internet. I, I furnish stuff. But if you do a water study, I did a water study, uh, two, three years ago. Ten thousand. With this, it's half the price, and I get continually information from them.
Good, alright, awesome. Well, that's my question. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Angie, did you?
Yes. I'm Angie Christmas, and I just got a text message from one of my friends talking about the airport. She pays in Granberry, seven thousand five hundred monthly. They have tenants that pay five hundred to fifteen hundred monthly for small planes.
For their, the hangar?
Yes. So, those are for sure numbers. And also, on this water situation, I've been going through a bunch of numbers, and I see a bunch of places where y'all can cut money and move over to the water. You don't have to add money to us. We're already footing this city taxes. We're already paying, I, I had two utility bills, fourteen hundred dollars almost, for two bills. I don't, we didn't use our pool this summer because y'all keep charging me sewer to fill up my water.
All you have to do is get another meter.
And pay another meter charge.
It's no big deal.
It's not a big deal to you, Bert. I know how much money you make.
No, you don't.
Um, actually, I have it right here.
You have no idea how much money I make.
Okay.
Okay.
You have, you have an idea of what the city pays him that does not preclude you with the information that you know exactly what the man's worth?
I did not say I know what he's worth. I said I know what he makes.
Please don't, don't do that to him here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir. Please go to the podium.
Yes, my nephew and I live on the south side of town. So, I did something that I haven't heard anyone's done yet. I went door knocking to all my neighbors. I asked them what they thought. First one next door, she said she couldn't afford any type of rate increase. She's seventy, has a disabled grandson. So, I went across the street. She's ninety-seven. Uh, she told me she had to borrow money to pay her insurance on her house. I went to four or five different people and asked them, this is on the south side, my neighbors, and they're just like me. We don't want an increase. I don't care what you do, we don't want an increase. All I can say is figure out another way, or sell your street sweeper. I'm done.
Any other comments? Well, if not, then I'm gonna close the meeting. Seven oh eight.